I'd like to call this Board of Education meeting to order. Today is September the 17th and the time is 6:05. So, a motion to, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Madam President, I move that the draft agenda is presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director.
Are we getting up discussion?
Aye. I'm sorry. Vice President Kendrick, can you power for discussion, please?
Is there any discussion regarding the agenda?
What is item 7.1?
I don't know.
Item 7.1 is board development with MSBA Representative Phyllis Sparks.
Okay. All right, thank you, because I could, when I put, when I clicked on it, I was like, I don't know what this is. But, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I will proceed with the roll call, Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Townsend.
Aye.
Vice President Kendrick.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
To the next lines, okay? The Compass Johnson, who was the student, Compass student? Who were they presenting on that?
That would be me.
Okay.
Good evening, directors.
Good evening.
It is my pleasure to bring you the first applause applause for the 2021 school year. This evening, we are recognizing Jolynn Howard, a fourth grade student at Compass Elementary. Since the beginning of the school year, he has consistently logged on to Zoom and has completed all of his assignments. What makes Jolynn stand out is his willingness to help others and his teacher, Mrs. Forney, with technical issues. When his teacher needs to try something out, Jolynn is always eager and willing to help. His teacher says it's a joy to have such a tech savvy and smart young man in her class. And he is on the Zoom with us today, and Ms. Payton, I don't know if we can stop sharing for just a moment so we can let him wave to us. Jolynn and his family is there, hi, Jolynn, if you all want to give some virtual claps. Jolynn will be receiving a certificate of recognition from us. And as I said, he is on the Zoom, as is his very proud principal, Ms. Erica Hoard. Congratulations, Jolynn, and please keep up the good work.
Can we get Jolynn to unmute his mic and then maybe he can say something, we can all see him in large frame? Jolynn, are you there?
Yeah.
Oh, now I can see you. Okay, Jolynn, I'm Superintendent Obeng, how are you?
Thank you.
Congratulations. I hear you're quite the tech savant there, right? You want a job, Jolynn? I know Dr. Smith could use some help in the tech department.
And Director Brooks needs some help also.
Congratulations, Jolynn, and congratulations to the parents, of course, for having such a fine young man. Jolynn, I hope I get an opportunity to see you in person at some point when we're back in and I'll come by your school and I'll have a little something for you. All right?
Thank you all, you'll have something in the mail from us as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations again, and it looks like the next item on the agenda is audience comments. If we can limit them to two minutes, I appreciate it. And do we have any audience comments at this time?
Yes, Madam President. Vice President, how you doing?
Good, how are you, Mr. Reagan?
I'm doing good. I am asking if the board will allow, there's nothing in the board policy that states that a person can speak more than one time in you guys' policy. It does states that you can only speak for two minutes. So for each of my answers, I could get two minutes. If y'all want to check with y'all lawyer first, or how y'all want to do that.
Carla, is that something that's feasible, or?
So, my recommendation would be to allow Mr. Reagan one, two-minute time period for comments. You all have the discretion to do what you want to do with regard to that, I don't believe, and I'm not looking at the policy, but I don't believe that it restricts you to one comment, but I think that has been the practice and it's certainly acceptable to continue to maintain the practice.
I would also add that we do not have an audience comments forum, so I too would agree that it should be limited to the one, two-minute session.
Okay.
But, Madam Chairman, if you guys don't mind, I would ask that if the board, simply because there isn't anything in your policies that state that, and we do not, or we're not capable of getting audience comments forums, this is the only way that we can do audience comments is through Zoom. So that should not disregard a person from asking more than one comment, and it's not in your board policies.
Audience comments are available on our website, you can always email me or call the district office and they are provided. And it is part of the policy as well, you can get, you have a link to get to it from the policy as well. I believe, I can't swear to that, but I know it's available on the website.
No ma'am, what I'm stating is, it's not said in your policy that a person can answer more than one question in a body. There's nothing in there that states that.
I think, Mr. Reagan, you're correct, you can ask as many questions you want, but the board has put a limit, and the board is, will most likely not respond to your comments as audience comments, so they may just receive it and then get back to you at a later date, so I would take that.
Yes, sir. Okay, well, I'm gonna make it real quick, I'm gonna do two minutes, shout out to Mr. Allen and them for Harvesters. I want to get a shout out to Coach Perkins and the Ruskin Football Team for going ahead on and winning this week. I wanted to also thank Mrs. Womler for listening to the community on bringing out our YouTube. I hope that we create a green room atmosphere for student athletes. We can use the green room and make it like a ESPN, we can have our students go ahead and basically do the commentary for the YouTube also, and we can also have them do commentary for ESPN using our green room. Number two, number three, number four. So, I was able to talk last night based on the incident that has happened, and we still, as a public, have not received a public apology from the director that had did the things that they had stated. So today, I want to talk to the community, I want to ask the communities to, first of all, stop voting on people to our Board of Education based on their name. Or a particular group might say so, vote, vote people who are dedicated to the work of our children. First, also, second to our community, and third to our children. Also, I'm hoping that we will hear that today based on the five-day business days that was given, the fifth day would have been on Friday, which would have been last week. The public was not even on the website. And I'm hoping that we will, I hope that, I'm charging the Board of Directors to hope that this will not ever, ever happen again, like I stated last night. And I'm hoping that this is not personal, this is just business. Things like that could have hurt at our district, and I'm hoping to hear that tonight from apology from the director who done it.
Thank you, Mr. Reagan. Donna, if you could pull the agenda, thank you. We can move to our next item. Looks like we have a consent item. Is there documentation for this?
Vice President Kendrick, we're asking for a motion to approve the consent items. The consent items were included via email, they include the operations bond update.
I can get a motion to?
I'm, I'm sorry, the consent items are the artificial turf replacement for Ruskin High School, Bosco contract renewal, Cornerstones of Care contract renewal, Nova Center contract renewal, the draft August 2020 regular session minutes, and the September 3rd, 2020, dress, draft special session minutes.
I'd like to move that we approved the consent items 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, and 5.6. I believe we can get all those approved without any substitutions. So that'll be my motion. 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, my five and five six, and 5.7 could stand alone.
I have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Second.
Thank you.
But, Madam President. Madam President.
Director Brooks.
And as, as relation to discussion, one of those items, now, tell me, I know that Mr. Weekly has the answer to this right, right there, but those are contracts, are they not, Mr. Weekly?
The contracts are, I think, would be Mr., Dr. Skinner, actually.
Oh, okay, Dr. Skinner, those are, a couple of those are contracts.
The, the student services, three renewals are contracts for special education contract students that are placed outside. We had some last month, and these are remaining contracts.
Okay, all right, now, was, was, now, I've worked on any construction, anything, Mr. Weekly?
First, the artificial turf replacement is a construction item, yes.
Okay, so, okay, all right, and so Superintendent Obeng, that's you, I guess I'm so used to going through the, the committee where they make this and put it on a consent. Well, I'm, 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 yeah, just got settled, I'm, I'm ready to vote, that's okay, I'll, I'll.
I, I think I know where you're getting at. Director Brooks, I think we can have an offline conversation about that pite of process later on.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Before we move to a vote? Okay, if, Ms. Payton, if you could call each member to vote, I appreciate it.
So, was there a second to?
We received two seconds, the first one was from Director Brooks, which will be the court-recorded second, the second second was from Director Carter. There was discussion. I will call the roll now. Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Townsend.
Aye.
Director, Vice President Kendrick.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
Madam President.
Vice President.
Well, Madam President, currently, I just wanted to let you know.
Okay. You're there, okay, thank you, Mr. President Watry, glad that you're back.
Thanks.
With. It looks like we're moving on to?
5.7.
5.7?
5.7, yes.
And I will defer to our attorney. The agenda was adopted as written, can we still pull, I know that was part of Mr. Townsend's motion. Attorney Johnson, do we pull that?
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Payton, I don't understand your question.
The agenda was approved as written.
Right.
The Towns' motion requested that item 5.7, the draft September 3rd minutes, be pulled from the consent agenda. I just want to make sure we're following procedure.
No, I didn't want it pulled, I just want it handled separate.
Yeah, you can, I mean, you can, after you.
He has pulled it in the motions, so we've approved it, the entire consent with the exception of those minutes, so.
Okay.
Right. You reordered, yeah.
So, we're making 5.7.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Item 5.7, is that?
I think it goes to Mr. Townsend first, in terms of he pulled it, so he must, must have a, an issue or concern with the minutes.
I have, I don't, I don't have an issue or concern with the minutes, per se, other than I wasn't at the meeting. So I can't verify. I would have to abstain. That's the only, that's the only thing that I, you know, the only concern I have. It was just as a situation of not handling every consent item at one time, and not hold, not holding the full host of their time.
Okay, so you're okay with the, the minutes, actually, as it is, since you weren't?
Yeah, like I said, since I wasn't there, all I could do is abstain, so that, like I said, I have no objection against the minutes.
Okay, so, Madam Chair, I guess you would procedurally, if there's, if there are any other questions, then you just look for a motion to approve the minutes, and then we could re-enter that back.
Move to motion to repeat that one more time, Mr. Obeng, I'm sorry.
Move the minutes, the Thursday, September 3rd, 2020 minutes?
Okay, if we can, a motion to approve the minutes for the September 3rd draft of the minutes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I seek a motion to, for the approval of Thursday, September 3rd, 2020, at 6 o'clock, virtual meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
I second.
And do we need to vote on this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Donna, if you could do a roll call, vote for me.
Please continue the discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, is there any more discussion? If no, yes, ma'am.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Townsend.
Abstain.
President Watry.
Aye.
Madam Chair, Hendrick.
Aye.
Motion carries four to one, thank you.
Madam, Madam President. Ms. Carla may want to respond, but, but when the records say four to one sound as though Mr. Townsend voted against it, I think it would be proper that with one extension.
That's correct.
Good catch, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Vice President Kendrick.
Yes.
Mind if I take it from here?
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
No, she's doing good.
Can we have a vote on that?
If you guys really want to. I believe that we were, if we went to 5.7, we were going on to 5.6.2, because 6.1 was voted upon? Okay, am I correct?
President Watry, we are at 6.1, the bond update, and Mr. Weekly will present that update.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just take a few minutes, why don't I just update the board, just want to let you know that currently, I'm meeting with architects twice a week, and meeting with the construction company also twice a week. Mondays, whereas we set aside with architects, Hollis Miller, to walk the sites and to actually physically be on-site at the buildings to examine the projects that we are going to finish with on project. These walkthroughs will culminate in, you know, better drawings, better bid packages and things like that for us, when it, when that comes time. Once those walkthroughs are completed, and we feel like we have a good handle and drawings are beginning, we'll go back to the principals at that time and talk about more specifics about, we feel like move this doorway six inches this way and not that way, and a little more specific details, and we'll go back over with them, begin to get their suggestions, get their feedback, and then go back to the drawing board again, and walking those sites and completing those drawings. Remember, our goal is to have drawings and everything finished by, by first of January, because we want to put out bids sometime in January. That way, we're ready for construction come spring, late spring, early summer. So we're right on schedule, we're, we have great scheduling right now, so I feel really good about the process. Please remember, we are in a three-phase, this is a three-phase project, and I just want you, I want to keep saying that to you. Remember, these projects that we have are very intrusive to the learning environment. So, we're gonna have to do a lot of these projects when kids just are not in school, so it's gonna be summertime. Okay, so please understand, this $30 million is gonna take about a three, two to three years to complete all the projects that we have, and not disrupt the learning environment. So, that's also a part of this too, is we develop these project lists and narrow down what those projects can be. We're developing, we're developing the phases, phase one, two, and three. So, we've started, now, we have, we think we have a fairly complete phase one. Probably by the October 15th meeting, we'll probably have those phases, phase one, pretty much complete about on paper, so we can present that to you at that time. Also, next week, I'll be coming to at the board meeting on the 24th with asphalt. We want to, asphalt is kind of a, kind of a particular item, because it is weather, is contingent on home weather. So asphalt companies start shutting down mid to, mid to late November, and we would like to get in some asphalt and concrete work since we are in rent at the current time. We would like to get asphalt and concrete prior to next year. And the reason why is because the cost is cheaper, labor's cheaper, the material is cheaper at this time. So if we can do that, we'd like to. We have got estimates for certain projects, not all of them, just a handful of them, for asphalt from our architect. The construction manager estimator is completing his estimates this week. They're gonna compare the two, and then we'll, I'll present those to you next Thursday on what's called a notice to proceed, I'll need you to vote on a notice to proceed. What this is basically, go ahead and progress with the asphalt and concrete work, and then it's built on a not-to-exceed amount. Okay, that's based on those two estimates, so not-to-exceed is probably, will always be a little bit high, and almost every time, the actual cost will be lower. But we want to give you the worst-case scenario on some of those projects, so you understand exactly what's the worst-case scenario for what we could spend on those projects as part of the bond. So I'll present them to you next Thursday for your approval. And just, please understand that we're continuing to have conversations with principals. Even the building, when I'm walking through them, I'm dragging the principals with me to say, hey, here's our thoughts and ideas with the architects and engineers as we do this, please give me your feedback along the way. So, we've had some very good conversations, we have very good feedback, and we have a good team working on this with Hollis and Miller. Entertaining questions you might have.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Weekly, you, you know how I feel about these contracts that don't have any MBWE participation. And although the board has not yet acted upon a policy, it would seem to me that our architect and yourself ought to be working very close with all of these companies, from the GC all down to the others, encouraging them to have some minority and women participation based on the city's guidelines and the city's senate participation. I think these are taxpayer dollars, and the, the taxpayers entrust us to spend this $30 million and all other dollars. And I think for them, for us not to approach these contractors and tell them what their moral obligation and civic obligation, it'd be a short sight and it's on our part. So let me, if I might, as, as number seven, encourage you and the, and the architect, with the support of the superintendent, to raise that issue with each of those, especially the GC, and make sure that, that we share with them, that all the, and we don't have to say, we don't have, we don't have to apologize, but to say, here's what we, well, I suggest, just tell them what, what, what we'd like to have them to do. If they challenge it, then so be it, but I think without saying anything is dearly our responsibility as, as custodians of this, of these, of these funds.
I totally agree, Mr. Brooks, and I think that's the reason why we, Universal, and we, and you were a part of the interviews last fall, that Universal is very committed to finding, you know, minority-based business and women-owned business. In fact, Universal themselves is a woman-owned business. So, they're very committed to that, and we've had, actually, in our weekly meetings, we continue to talk about those very issues, and I appreciate you bringing them, it's very important to all of us. And, so we'll, you continue to push them in that direction.
Would you also, if I might, Mr. President? If you, if you would also, just weekly, share with the board at the appropriate time, what those percentages are, and who those minority contractors are would be helpful, and whether or not.
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm not saying that Universal would, would do some cheating, but it would be good, whether or not they are certified by the city as bona fide MBs.
Absolutely, and I'm, and Mr. Brooks, just to reassure the board and yourself that, you know, we don't hold the contracts, and that's the beauty of the construction manager risk process, is that we hire the construction company to hold those contracts instead of the district. So that puts us out of that liability and puts it, really, the, the full ownership of that on them, which is a benefit to the district and to meet our cost, cost targets, so in addition to that, you know, they fully understand, and I think that was, that was a big part of that interview process, and they fully understand our, our need, our want for, for as much minority process, part participation as we can get. And I really feel like they're a dedicated company to that process, I really do.
It's fine, Mr. President, if you don't mind, if maybe, weekly, at the appropriate time, the representative from Universal could come before us and at least in brief, share what they're doing in that regards, I think would be helpful.
Well, and, and it's a good segue to my next statement, which was, each month, starting in the October meeting, so every month, Justin, our architect, lead architect, Hollis Miller, and Joel Smith, who is the vice president of Universal, will be with us every month, giving us this bond update, and it won't be just me, it'll be them as well. So that's our chance to hold them accountable for exactly what you're talking about, Mr. Brooks, and I think that's appropriate. And the part I kind of did not finish was, is that I'll be, even though I'm not the one putting out the bids, because Universal holds those contracts, I'll be a part of that bid process and the pre-bid meetings. I want to fully participate on that to make sure I'm pushing that, pushing the envelope on that very issue.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
For those questions, Mr. Weekly and I have had some conversations around moving forward, and we will be coming each month with an update.
with updates to the boards. I think this is the time for the board to ask the questions in terms of at the beginning of the stage, right? Before we actually make any commitments and things. So this is your opportunity now to give us any insight or direction that you would like. So hopefully you'll have those opportunities each month as we come forward, and, and we're gonna have a great opportunity to use these dollars over the next couple of years.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say I trust Mr. Wheatley totally. Said he's, said he's, said he's the one to the Northwest Bear, Bearcats.
I'm, I'm sorry, sir. You say you trust who?
Mr. Wheatley, totally. He, he's part of the, the green and white.
As, as an Emporian Hornet, I resent that, and.
What was that? You resemble that comment?
Emporian Hornet. So, yeah.
Well, my final comment is go Bearcats. All right.
Ah, okay. All right. Moving on to actual business. Thank you for your update, Mr. Wheatley. Does the board have any, like, any additional questions to possibly be able to add so that we can make sure that we're aware and addressing this appropriately?
No, I, I think we're, what you're, the questions that you, we have been asking are right on. I think, I think the weekly, I think, I'm sorry, the monthly update is gonna be a perfect scenario, where you're gonna have no, I mean, you're, hopefully have every question answered. So, and if not, that's a great time to ask those questions. But we are meeting so much right now. You know, certainly you can shoot Mr. Obeng a question if you have one, and if I can get you one before the meeting, I'd be glad to answer those for you. So.
Sounds good. All right. There's no further discussion. Moving on to item six point two. Which, yeah, bond issue certified election results.
But I think that's Attorney Johnson.
Ms. Johnson, you are?
I, I am. I apologize. I thought that that was Ms. Peyton. I didn't realize that was.
She's like, huh?
No, I'm sorry. We had discussed who would present it, and it was my understanding that you agreed to. So I'm not prepared to. We would have to move it to the twenty-fourth, because I sent the information to you. And I'll go through my email, but I'm sure we decided that you would.
Okay. Let's do the first one for the twenty-fourth then.
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and move to the twenty-fourth. We're also, I believe that it's also a, a agenda item on the twenty-fourth to thank those who have a presentation of thanking those who actually were able to work on this, on, on our bond issue.
My apologies. I did not, I don't recall seeing an email message asking me to do that.
I am so sorry.
We all quit apologizing.
So.
Sorry about that.
No, Ms. Johnson, I'll ask this question. Would it be appropriate for us to vote to move this item to the twenty-fourth open session meeting?
That would be fine. Yes, that'd be appropriate.
Well, the chair is then seeking a motion to, to move six, seven point, I'm sorry, six, is it seven point one? Or no, I'm sorry, six point two. The bond issue election results to the twenty-fourth open session meeting.
So moved.
Chair seeking a second.
Second.
If there is no further discussion, we'll call it to a vote. Director Brooks?
Aye.
Vice President Kendrick?
Aye.
Director Carter?
Aye.
Director McGee?
Aye.
So you turn your camera?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. And Director Townsend?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. I believe we are at six to, six to zero. Moving on to board item seven point one, Board of Education Development.
Thank you, President Watry. As, as the board knows, we've, thank you to the board for the commitment in terms of your development. We've had, I think, two or three sessions in terms of board development. We've covered a number of areas from board roles, superintendent roles, communications, and this is ongoing professional development for the board. And based on the board's feedback from our last session, we wanted to look at further around some strategy on communications and also look, talk about committees. And we've got the assistance of Phyllis Barks from the Dairy School Board Association. The one area that we didn't, weren't able to kind of put into this agenda because of time, we'll go forward is the board expressed desire to talk about parliamentary rules, and we will do that. And this, I, I just had a thought that possibly when we have our, we already have an expert that will come in. Possibly we might do a mock of board and closed session in terms of the rules, and that might be a good way for the board to ask some questions through that. So if you have any thoughts on that, please let me know later on. But at this point, I'll invite Ms. Barks to join us and and we'll begin our session. And I just, actually, before she starts, can we just check for Ms. Barks? Can I do a, can we do a quick roll call of board members who are here, so she knows the numbers? We were gonna do some break calls, but I don't think we'll be, we'll be able to do that today, but we still need to know numbers. Ms. Peyton?
Hello?
You know, quick roll call from board members. We know exactly how many we have and who's here.
You're muted, Ms. Peyton.
I don't know.
Director Brooks?
President?
Director Carter?
Here.
Director Townsend?
Here.
Director McGee?
Here.
Director Graves? Vice President Kendrick?
Aye, here.
President Watry?
President.
There are six board members on the meeting.
Thank you. So I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Barks. I know you'll need sharing capabilities. I think if you look and see if your icon says sharing, then you'll have that.
Yeah. Yes, I do. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. It's great to be back with you again. Can you just give me a thumbs up if you can hear me okay? All right. Good, good, good. So thank you again for this opportunity to be with you. I always enjoy being able to interact with you. And, and a few weeks ago, I think we had some really good discussions. You really brought in some terrific examples, and I thought we had an opportunity to really take the information in, in your context and make it meaningful for you. And so I, I really appreciate those of you who shared and everybody's participation in that. Mr. Townsend, Mr. McGee, it's good to see you. And, excuse me. Mr. Townsend, especially good since I, I know you from your previous term of service, so it's good to see you back. Mr. McGee, I look forward to the opportunity to meet you in person and I will look forward to getting to know you if I have opportunities to get with you all again. And I'm gonna ask that you, if you, I am, you do get credit for being present here and participating in the workshop. And so, but to do that, I need to be able to see you. And so if you want credit for this evening, please do turn on your camera. The, the other thing that that really helps with is if those of you who were in the session last time, we talked about the importance of active listening and how we, how we model and demonstrate active listening. And so I'm gonna call on a few of our folks who were present last time to just, if you would unmute, if you want to share, what were, what do you think, what do you remember how you demonstrate active listening? And if you're not a board member, if you could mute your microphone, that would be really helpful because I'm, I'm getting some feedback and having trouble hearing. So I'm, and maybe I'll just call on, on folks. Mr. Brooks, what did you remember about how you showed that you're actively listening? If you unmute.
Ms. Barks, I, I welcome this evening. I think you're going alphabetically, and I don't know whether that's fair, but anyway, and, and I was going to respond anyway. I think we, we talked about the how, when you, when you have conversation and with someone and you're listening, that yes, you let your facial expressions and all indicate to the other person that in fact you are listening to and taking into account what they're saying. And some embodied language is a part of that, being very attentive to that. And that's, that's what I, one of the main things I remember coming out of that is that that you let the person through your expression and all know that, yes, I am listening to you very attentively.
Great. Thank you so much for that. I, I appreciate that. And I wasn't really going alphabetically. You were just at the top corner of my screen, so. It was, it was by default in that manner. Ms. Carter, is there anything that you recall about active listening?
Um, I believe we've talked about eye contact, just making that eye contact, letting that person know that you're listening to everything that they're talking about.
All right, great. And Mr. Watry, how about you?
I think you touching on the perverbal aspect of active listening and aspect of not just being able to hear what somebody's saying, but then being able to pick up on body language and being able to listen to, listen holistically to the person. I think that I, I kept referring to it as like reflective listening, but I think the aspect of active listening in the moment, just being able to receive information so that, and, and being able to also kind of, I don't know if it's a good word for it, but regurgitate what's been said, so, so that there's a clear understanding.
Great. And, and thank you for that, Mr. Watry. And Ms. Kendrick, is there anything you want to add to that?
No more to add. I think we all, no more to add.
Okay, great. So Ken, I did share my screen, but I, I'm not, are you able to see my PowerPoint?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, terrific. Well, let's get rolling then. So, Mr. McGee, thank you for your camera. I appreciate that. And so this evening, we are going to just spend a little time, another little piece just to reflect on the past retreat when we were together, just for a couple of minutes. And then we talked a, a number of things last time about differentiating the board's role from Mr. Obeng's role and how you all work collaboratively and different types of governance practices. And, and that's when you brought up some really great situations and examples. And so we're gonna kind of apply, see how you apply that to some more case study examples this evening. And then we'll take a little deeper dive into board committees and learn, you know, just kind of explore your policy. What are some considerations and, you know, kind of some ideas moving forward with that? So I'm curious what your takeaways were from the last session. And not that you took a chair out of the room, actually you're in your own home, so I guess if you take a chair, it's, it is your chair. But when you, you know, since we got, were together the last time, are there, are there any things that have been resonating with you? Maybe something that really struck a chord with you or something that you thought was helpful? Or maybe, you know, you learned something that you've tried to practice in the weeks since we were together last time. And so just take a minute and think about maybe one or two, just one or two things that you recall when we were talking about the board and superintendent roles? If there was anything that kind of stood out to you or that you've kind of been thinking about since then?
Yeah, so you don't have to call on people.
Can I interject? Because I do want to share one, one piece that I know I'm the periphery to the board, but I really enjoyed, I keep thinking about this, the, the aha moments that came from Director Carter, where she said, oh, I don't have to do that. Okay. So I thought that was quite appropriate in terms of really defining what you're supposed to do, what you're not doing, what your roles are, what you're responsible for. It sounded like she had a weight lifted off her shoulders when she had that bit defined.
Well, thank you, Mr. Obeng. Now you see, I said, well, send it to Obeng. Now everything's like, well, send an email to Mr. Obeng. Yes, that's our new word. Send it to Obeng.
Okay. Well, I, I think he's got pretty big shoulders. I think he can manage it. So, Mr. Watry, what, what was your takeaway?
The, the aspect of being, of being informative or being informative and aspect of being able to provide the, the information or the concerns of not just with communication with staff and not just, yeah, not just communication with staff, but also with a community and following the chains of command. To take a more informative approach than an interrogative approach with, with some of the inquiries that we can, we will make to the superintendent on that we make the, those, we make those notifications that we send to the superintendent and not send to particularly his staff, but rather to him, for him to be able to distribute that as he's the person who is in control of procedure, which the procedural aspects of the, of the, of the district, whereas we control the governing, governance, which usually falls in lines with policy and procedure. I'm gonna stop there, so I don't say everything.
Okay. All right. Well, Ms. Kendrick, since we had you last, last time, and the previous question, do you want to, is there anything you want to add that maybe you remember or has resonated with you?
Just, just our correspondence with stakeholders that stuck out to me, especially since right after our, our meeting, we had a couple of emails regarding graduation, so it was great to know what the response should be and who should we be responding. So that was a great.
All right. And does anybody remember what policy code that is? What policy are we talking about when we, we talk about chain of command or how, how, where, how to and where to refer patrons when they, you know, come to us with questions or concerns?
Definitely know it's in the communications category. When it comes to the board, I mean, board governance and board operations come into section B. So I'm gonna generalize there, because.
Okay. Well, you are, you are correct about that. It is not one of the B policies in the governance section. It is policy K as in kite L as in Lucy. So K L is that policy that is about patron concerns and complaints. And so those were good takeaways from that. Does anybody else have anything that just comes to mind that you want to share? Yes, sir?
I, I wasn't at the last one, but I can tell it take away some, they did learn something because I was looking at the past year's agendas, and it had a lot of stuff on there that wasn't their job. There were, there were, there were, there were recite, they were doing things that wasn't a board member's job, but it was the superintendent's job. So they did, you know, looking at the shorter agendas, the more precise things, it shows me that somebody has learned something somewhere from before to now.
Okay. Thank you for that observation, Mr. Townsend. And one last thing, anybody have anything to share? Okay, silence isn't gonna be golden forever. I'm gonna pick on people, you know. But that's great. I, I appreciate those takeaways. And then just to recap, just a couple of key things that I think stood out for in my. But that's great. I appreciate those takeaways. And then just to recap, just a couple of key things that I think stood out for in my mind in our discussions that really brought. That brought out some really good examples from you and some good questions and that sort of thing. So coming back to that each of you were elected individually and you all are certainly bring your own. Opinion and reflection of the information and share your opinion at the board and you cast your own vote. But beyond that, your authority as an individual, there is no legal authority as a board member. Only when you are acting in a board meeting with your board colleagues. And it's the board that, that takes action and makes decisions. Or causes something to happen. And that is articulated in, in law as well as your board policies. And we have a court case in Missouri that further articulated that and clarified that. And so. While, again, this is an area where the community gets confused from time to time and, and you help to help educate them. When they come to you or when, when you maybe make requests to the superintendent or other staff. Is that, you know, legally, those things can only happen when it's the board acting as a whole. And so. It's an ongoing challenge. It is one of those gray areas that are hard for not only board members, but certainly members of the public. We, we referenced your policy and, and, you know, get to be friendly, especially with your, the governance section in the Bs as in boy. All of those are the policies specific to the board. And so be sure you're, you're get kind of cozy with those. And BBA, what we talked about, your roles as it's defined in board policy. And then policy also kind of defines some of Mr. Obeng's roles and his is to carry out those expectations that the board establishes, as you know. And to be accountable to you in terms of reporting to you and making sure that you are informed about how things are going. And if they're moving in the, in the right direction. So we clarified those things and we looked at examples of how that plays out into practice. This was just that little visual representation of just what, what those policies just articulated and where. The board is operating above the line, the 50,000 foot view. District wide considerations, you have to think about what's best for the whole district and all your students. And then the administration led by Mr. Obeng is figuring out how to get all that done and managing all of that. Obviously, as you know, there's overlap, you work together on that. And so. I think the work that you're doing here in these, in these work sessions and these retreat kind of. Atmosphere really served to strengthen that collaboration and helps you to learn more about each other and how you work together. So again, you know. Just kudos to you for taking the time to do this.
Ms. Brooks, you did say that the board is working above the line, not above the law, right?
Well, we hope those are one and the same. That we're staying above the law. I don't know if we, maybe we don't, maybe we're not defining that the same way.
We don't want to work above the law.
No, we, we certainly don't want to violate the law. We want to stay within the boundaries of the law for sure. And being mindful of your policies is that local way you're, you're tending to your local laws, so to speak. All right. So why, why are we even focusing on this? Because we know from research about school boards. That the boards that lead as a united team, the, the, the board working together and working with the superintendent. And respecting their roles and understanding what each of their roles are. And respecting each other with that and working with, you know, toward common goals. Those boards are, those districts in which those boards and superintendents are operating are much more effective. We see much higher student performance. We see ongoing district improvement. And, and so, you know, we do want to focus on this and continue your focus and improvement on behalf of your students in your district. I know how passionately each of you feel about your district, about Hickman Mills and your students. And the improvement that you seek. And so working together on this behalf is excellent. All right, let's kind of, let's kind of look at how this plays out in some scenarios again. So kind of put your sinking caps on, you're sort of the consultants here and you're going to advise these board members in terms of their actions and what they're, what they're doing. So in this one about be my witness, as you pull into your driveway, your neighbor Veronica Smith approaches you. She believes her daughter is not being treated fairly by her volleyball coach, who is also her math teacher. Veronica wants to sit down and have a heart to heart talk with the coach just to get things out in the open. However, she really wants a witness to be part of this conversation. Veronica would like you to be that person. And you are glad that she is following the channels of communication as outlined in policy KL. But you have some reservations about being the witness. Although she doesn't mention it, you remember that Veronica made a substantial contribution to your election campaign. And she even helped you deliver yard signs. So how would you respond to Veronica? And why? So think about what we learned about. Board roles and that sort of thing. And think about how, how you might respond to Veronica.
I'll go first.
All right, Mr. Townsend?
I would simply tell Veronica that, you know, I couldn't be the witness. Simply because it may, it may come to a point where there's a situation that's appealed to the board and it would be a conflict of interest. If, if I was. Involved early in investigation.
All right. Anybody else have anything different? Or what do you think about Mr. Townsend's response?
I believe he's correct. I believe he's correct in the aspect of if it does become something that ends up, that needs. Appeal process happens with the board, that that board member will have to abstain based on the fact that they've involved themselves in the situation by playing witness.
All right. I see some other heads nodding as well. And so, yes, you gentlemen are correct on that. So. You know, thankfully, at least Veronica knows the, the policy, but yes.
I would think that I'd have an obligation not only to indicate what my role is, but I also think I would direct her to. To talk to the principal about this issue. And, and tell her, of course, you always have a right to have a witness, but I certainly can't be one of them. But you talk to the principal about the teacher and both that and go from there. That's, that's as far as I think a board member should go. But at least explain to her without just saying, I can't do it, but tell her what, give her some direction as to what she should do. And that she certainly has a right to have a witness.
Certainly. Yep, all correct. So yes, encourage her if she feels more comfortable with the witness, but that you can't be that person for the very reasons. Mr. Townsend and Mr. Watry stated that it might percolate through the policy up through all the levels. It might go to from. You know, the, the coach to the coach slash math person to the principal, to an assistant superintendent and to the superintendent. And ultimately, it could be appealed to the board. If you've been a witness and been party to that at that level. You are not able to be, it's, you would not be viewed as being objective, being able to be objective and would need to. Recuse yourself from that discussion and any kind of decisions. And any lawyer representing that parent or if they're, or the teacher worth their salt is going to boot you wide off of that conversation. If it got to that point. So good response. And there's just an illustration of your policy KL. Okay, so let's try another one. And here you are talking about construction this evening and some projects that are going to be happening. So I didn't realize that, but here we go. This may be relevant down the road. The ABC School District is at the end of a construction project for a new addition to one of the elementary schools. Board member Bob has worked in the construction industry for 23 years. After work one evening, Bob went through the new addition and created a punch list and sent it to the contractor. Do you think Bob is providing oversight or is he overstepping? I should have done a poll for this so we could have voted. Right? How about just a show of hands? If you think Bob is providing oversight, show of hands. I see no hands. Raise your hand if you think he's overstepping. All right, I see some hands there. Okay. So why do you think so?
Can you go back to the scenario?
Certainly. So, so Bob is, he has, he's a board member and he has some experience in construction. And he went, walked through the new addition to the elementary school and he saw some things that he didn't think. Had been completed or done correctly. And so he created what's called a punch list, so a list of things that he wanted addressed. And he presented that to the contractor. And so why do you think he is overstepping his boundaries as a board member?
There's nothing he's asked, nothing he's doing has anything to do with his role as a board member.
Well, I, I see it kind of, now I see it both ways. Well, I guess he was providing oversight. What he should have done was sent it to. The superintendent probably, not contractor directly. If he saw some things that need to be addressed, he probably should have sent it that way, but.
And I would.
To the contractor.
Yeah, no, I would, I would double down on what you're saying, but I would, the only thing that would change is the fact that he decided to make a punch list to begin with, instead of just stating. Directing to the superintendent, the issues that he had, that concerns that he had. And allowing the superintendent to address it. He felt that based on his experience as a contractor, that he felt that he could address it. Even if he wants to talk to the superintendent, providing that punch list is, is out of his purview as a board member.
I'm sure I agree with that totally. If you're going through the building and you see some things that, that come to your attention. That you make a list of them and then go to the superintendent and say, you know, I just, I was just by school A and I noticed that the. That what the contractor is doing, there's a big gap between this, 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 this.
That's true.
And I noticed also that the door is turned around, you know, open from the right rather than from the left. Just wanted to share this with you. It seemed to me that, that's, that's a minor part of the punch list, but at least. To see that and not say anything, I think I'd have some concern with.
So I have a question for you. Did we lose Mr. McGee? I, I have a question.
I was actually going to ask, I was actually going to ask for us to take a pause for a second. I believe we did. We lost him about right before this, right before your first scenario.
Okay, so I have a question. Do you think Bob? Should have been going through the building?
Well, I don't think, if he's going through the building looking for something. As a part of, to develop his own punch list. But, you know, it doesn't say, it doesn't say, you know, when we're there, I'm just assuming that. I have to assume that he was, he was just there and happened to see these things rather than going through them.
Wait, we can't, let's, we're not, let's not make any assumptions. Let's just go on what information we know. Okay, what, what we know from the story here.
Go back to the story. I just, I want to be able to use it as reference because I do feel like this kind of provides. So.
All right. So we're at the end of a construction project, new addition, elementary school. And I apologize, I should have provided these scenarios to you in a handout in advance so you could look at them as we went. So I apologize for that. And so Ms. Bob, who is the board member.
Yeah.
He has, he has construction expertise and he's taken it upon himself to do a walkthrough into the building. And he has made note of some things that he sees that need to be addressed. And he's put those on a list and he's given them directly to the contractor.
I changed my mind.
There, that's where it was, Mr. Brooks. So it's like, I didn't want him submitting a punch list because he should have just.
I missed that part. I think I nodded off on that part, but.
Okay.
I thought if he was just following the script here, no, he, he's not aligned.
First of all, why, why is he going into the schools at night?
Yeah, is he picking the lock to get in there?
Yeah, it's the code.
So what, so let's, let's go on. I have, what are the, some possible consequences of Bob's actions?
Trespassing? Um, I'm sorry. But, I mean, with. I mean, other than like really trespassing. When I look, thinking, just thinking in aspects of policy as far as consequences when it comes to our policies, it would just be. Being addressed. Being addressed by the board in that aspect.
Okay, yeah, so he's violated policy and his board, his board colleagues may look down upon that and they may, they may reprimand him a bit. Normally what happens when you give the contractor a list of things to address, what happens?
The price will go.
The price usually goes up. You get a bill for that. And so Bob has now possibly caused the district some additional money. And, and he's not followed protocol. And so. Knowing that, you know, he has this expertise, what might be a better way for Bob to start this conversation? If he has, you know, an interest in the construction project?
One of the things that I would suggest is possibly getting. Like notifying the superintendent that he has interest in, in, in this project. Even as far as like just scheduling a, trying to schedule a walkthrough at a decent time to be able to say, to be able to. With either, with the superintendent, the contractor. So that he can be able to provide some insight and possibly some, some gaps that he may see based on the experience that he has where.
Sure, sure. So it's, it's just like any other kind of situation in which you have, you know, kind of a question or maybe. You know, something you want to share, you work through your superintendent and say, hey, did you, did you realize, you know, I have all this experience? You know, if you'd like another pair of, set of eyes, I'd be happy to do a walkthrough. The other thing Bob might do is he might ask to have put this on the agenda for a board meeting. And he might ask the board, you know, is, would there be any value? Is there interest in, from the board and, and Mr. Obeng? For me to, you know, kind of do a walkthrough with them before we sign off on this project. And so following kind of that same protocol that you would do for any other kinds of things is to use your board agenda. And, and communicate with your superintendent. So good, good comments, good thoughts. All right, let's do one more.
I just, me, one comment on that. Beyond the, the policy pieces, there are some significant liability issues going onto a construction site. That I know all construction sites I've been part of, especially school sites, they're usually quarantined off, especially after hours. And only certain people are allowed to go on there and you need to have the proper equipment, whether if it's a hard hat or shoes. And if anything happened, you'd be, the district, district and the board would be in a lot of liability around that. So those. Those aspects, even beyond the policy pieces are pieces that you would think Bob would know because Bob is in the industry. But I thought I'd just mention that piece.
Yeah, also, also there's a liability if he accidentally left the door open.
That's right.
Started walking out with stuff.
Or something falls on his head or something, right, too?
Right, right. Yeah, all good points, so.
Someone should talk to Bob.
Yeah, I, I think Ms. Johnson ought to be talking to Bob about the legal aspects of this. So all, all good points, good, good, good aspects. So let's try one more and then we'll kind of move on for the sake of time.
Before we do one more, I'm sorry. Before we do one more, I'm sorry. Ms. Payton, are you still here?
She's here.
Here.
Hey, can you do me a favor, just for record in the minutes, can, can we just go ahead and do a roll call? And let it reflect in the minutes that a roll call was done and who was present?
Firstly, Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Corner.
Aye.
Director Townsend.
Aye.
Director McGee. Director Graves. Vice President Kendrick.
Present.
President Watry.
Present. Thank you, Ms. Payton, let the minutes reflect who was present. Please continue, Ms. Parks.
Alright, thank you. So let's try this one, this is about Rotary, the Rotary Club. Again, the ABC School Board is considering a ballot initiative for a tax levy increase in the April election. While the board has not officially voted to move forward with asking for the levy increase, the board and superintendent have held a few community forums outlining the need for the levy and to gauge community support. Board member Howard has been a member of the Rotary for 20 years. The chair asked Howard to speak at the upcoming Rotary Breakfast to share his views about the district's finances and future plans. What should Howard do? So, the board is, and superintendent have been talking about a possible levy. On the, in the April election, they've had some community forums to gauge interest and answer questions. And, but they haven't made a final decision yet and the Rotary Chairperson has asked Howard, who is a long time Rotary member, to speak about the district's finances and future plans, so what should Howard do?
Yeah, Howard should address the board with this invitation to speak at the Rotary Breakfast regarding whether it's to share his views or not. I think that by sitting and talking about board business, whether it's the district's finances, the future plans needs to be made as a decision with the full board and letting the board know that he's being asked to discuss his, his views about the district finances, also, I would also emphasize that.
I'm not, I'm gonna have you pause there, Mr. Watry. We're gonna let somebody else also answer and see if there are any differing opinions or anybody wants to add anything, thank you.
I, I would say that he would need to decline the offer to speak on the district's finances. But if any future plans, if it's open or are a public knowledge, then fine, but any finances shouldn't be disclosed if it's not public knowledge. And he should refer to the, again, the spokesperson for the school board or the school district will be the superintendent.
Okay, anybody else?
Go ahead. It says the chair asked Howard, what, which chair?
This is the chair of the Rotary Club, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah. Mr. Brooks, did you want to add something?
Well, I, I think that Mr. Howard should decline referring him to the, the, either the chair of the, the president of the board or to superintendent.
Alright, alright. So I, I think you all have been paying close attention the last, in the last sessions and you've, you've, when you, when I asked you what you, what were some of the takeaways? I, I think you, you really took away some of the core things that we talked about last time and understanding kind of the route. That Howard really doesn't, he's not the spokesperson. And even though his, the chairman of the Rotary might be asking for Howard's opinion, we all know that when Howard's speaking about the district, that people are gonna under, you know, think he's speaking on behalf of the board. And so unless the board has authorized Howard to speak in that respect, he really should decline that offer and, and, and inform the chair of the Rotary as to who he should contact to, to share that information. That I'm sure we'd be happy to be, you know, to give an update, but I'm not the person to do that. You know, I'll be happy to put you in touch with the board president or the superintendent and they can respond for you. So good, good, good call on that. Anybody? Final to add, alright. Are we on time, can we do this last one? Before we move to committees?
Yeah, we're good, we've got an exceptional class here, so.
Alright, alright. This is the gifted group tonight. Alright, so let's talk about the, this is about the model security plan for the district. And, I'm sorry, I just saw somebody in the office and I wanted to make sure it was, somebody was supposed to be here. So excuse me for my little distraction there for a moment. Board member.
Might be Bob.
Might be Bob, that's right. Now, many of you know Susan Goldammer, one of our attorneys, she burns the late oil many evenings. She doesn't really wake up until about noon, her, her work clock in her head. So she likes to work late in the evenings. Alright, so board member Rita believes that the ABC District Security Plan for the district is, schools is excellent. So she's, Rita's proud of the security plan for her district. She remembers that the ABC Board has followed some effective practices from other boards in their region. And so she thinks that their security plan should be a model for other districts to use. Her friend Samuel is a board member in the neighboring XYZ District. Rita sent a copy of the ABC Security Plan, including detailed building diagrams to Samuel to share with the XYZ District Board. Was this a good idea for Rita to share the district's security plan? Why do you think so or why not? And Ms., and Mr. Watry, I'm gonna ask you to be quiet for this a minute and let's see, let's let some other board members answer first.
I don't think it would have been a good idea for her to share it because she was showing confidential information as and you sharing it with someone outside the board.
Okay, other, other thoughts?
I was gonna say the same thing, I was, she was, she got to it before I was gonna say it, but that's exactly what I was thinking.
Yeah, so what part of, what part of that might be confidential information, do you think, Ms. Carter?
Well, she was basically showing the district's security, everything that had to do with the security risk of the district. Some things like that you would want to share with others, you, because you're not for sure what they're able to do with that information. And that could cause harm to the district. I'm just the type of person, I wouldn't put trust, I don't care if it's your friend, neighbor, relative or whoever it is, you do not share information like that with anyone.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Townsend, did you want to share something?
Well, it's our security plan for our security. And it would be presented in open session to a district, a different district, because it's not their security plan, therefore they have to, they would have to share it, you know, in open session, so all the little criminal elements all over the place will have to our security plan.
Right, right. Yeah, so the, the really, the big flag on that was that there were detailed diagrams and, of the buildings, which could be, you know, emergency ex, pardon me, emergency exits might be marked. There would be maybe if there's a security officer in the building, where they're located, maybe where some, you know, specific supplies are or, you know, access to children or various kinds of things, so you're exactly right, this is confidential information. And Rita has taken it upon herself to, because she's proud of the plan and doesn't understand maybe the nature of the information in that plan, to want to share that. So, you know, you are honor, it is, you have to make a special effort to remember the, the information that is discussed in closed session. And I'm sure with, you have meeting after meeting, you know, you have open session meetings, you have closed session meetings every month. That when you're away from the meeting, it may be hard to remember, did we discuss that in open session or did we discuss that in closed session? And so, yes.
What, what should the board, what action should the board take with regard to board member?
Rita?
Rita.
I, I think it would, well, I, I think it would be pretty much any, the same action they would take with a board member that divulged any confidential information. You know, first, there's, there's probably the private conversation, maybe the board president or even another board member as a, a conversation with Rita to say, did you realize this was confidential information, you, we, you know, this is not to be released, we are supposed to protect that, that kind of information. You have put the, you may have put the district at risk and our students at risk, there could be consequences and you know, we, we need you to make sure that you're not sharing confidential information. If, if Rita continues, if this is, it becomes a pattern and Rita shares other confidential information and the private conversations haven't been successful, then, you know, the board can publicly in a meeting admonish Rita and say, you know, we, we've had instance after instance of which we're aware of you sharing confidential information. And you've put the district at risk, the board does not condone this. And, you know, we, you can sanction the board member in that regard. The, you know, another step the board can take is to say, because you continually have violated this and we've asked you not to, the board can not allow Rita to be, serve as a, an officer of the board. Or if you have board committees, not to serve on any board committees. But beyond that, unless, you know, there could be a lawsuit and, and the district and Rita could be sued. So those are consequences that could, could happen even outside the board's authority.
Ms. Brooks, thank you for responding to that and I, I think you kind of explained sort of a progressive discipline in terms of what could happen, but there also, the context makes a difference, it could go from zero to 60 in a context, if this situation happened, let's say in Parkland where there was a school shooting and a board member did that, then I don't think there would be any sort of allowance from the community or other, the boards and understanding this high security risk around those type of disclosures, right? So the context can make a difference in terms of how the board responds as well.
Yes.
Yes, and then just a quick question, just, I know at the beginning of our meeting you said that if we're in attendance, we would get credit for it. So some of us dropped off, so we want to make sure that the ones who are here get credit.
Yes, the ones who are here for the duration of this segment of the workshop will get credit and it will show up on your MSBA transcript in our database.
Okay.
Your good ticket to the Chiefs game.
I'm afraid I can't swing that one. Are they playing tonight, Mr. Brooks?
No, no, no.
Alright, well, at least I, you know, I hate to be up against the Chiefs because I'm, I'm a fan as well.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, so, yeah, so lots of consequences, you, you know, you're honor bound. These are statements that are in your policy BDC about closed meetings, records and votes. It's not just fill us up here telling you this, there's, you know, there's a reason why you have to be careful and constantly help each other in maintaining that level of confidentiality. So here's my wrap up for our review before we move to committees. How many of you remember, how many board members does it take to change a light bulb? Ah, I see some zeros. I see three zeros. Alright, alright, you are correct. Board members don't change light bulbs. Board members say, we want there to be good light in all our, our buildings and classrooms, we want them to be well lighted. And it's then up to the superintendent and staff and the maintenance folks to make sure that we have light. So excellent, good, good remembering on that. Alright, well, I think you passed with flying colors this evening on our little kind of review and, and refresh and apply what you, we talked about last time, to be able to look at that in scenarios.
Ms. Parks, before you go, before you go on, now we have a, a comment that I was wondering if it relates to kind of what we were just discussing.
Okay.
About board responsibilities, board members' responsibilities, there was a question in the chat.
Uh, I guess I'll entertain that to Mr. Watry, the president, to see if he want to allow that.
So.
It's not an interactive session though, right?
Okay, okay, I wasn't, I wasn't sure, so I.
We've passed the public comment period and so if it's from a member of the public and not a board member, then I would say no.
And I would, and I would say no and I would redirect that, that member to wait until there's time to be able to say it.
Alright, so let's move on about board committees and I, I know you've had maybe some prior discussions about this and that you've had committees in the past. And this is a new year, a new team and a time to kind of assess where you are and what this board, this governance team wants to do and, and how you're going to work together. And so I thought it might be helpful to just sort of reflect on what your policy says and I did share policy BCE with Ms. Payton and I, it may have gotten posted or shared on the, the board docs. But I've highlighted kind of the key things from the policy that are relevant, so you, you don't have to get it, just know that it is policy BCE. That the board acts as, this is the key right here at the top. The board shall act as a committee of the whole. That means all seven of you, on all manners, matters pertaining to the business and educational polys, policies of the district. If I could read, it might be, you might understand that a little better, get my words out. Now that being said, the board may decide that you want or need committees. And so you may appoint standing committees and we'll talk a little bit about what standing committees are in a moment. But no individual member or group comprised of less than the full board shall exercise the power of the full board unless authorized by law or policy. And we already know from earlier this evening that according to law and policy, it's only the board when acting in a board meeting as a whole that has authority to take action. And so the board decides, do we need a committee? And that the committee doesn't have any authority to take action on behalf of the board unless they are authorized to do so, okay? So that, that being our foundation for looking at committees. So there are different types of committees that boards do, can have at their disposal and can, some do use them, not every board has committees, only some. And standing committees are those that occur on a regular basis, more of an ongoing perhaps basis. They're usually longer term. And usually standing committees are focused on specific district operations. And I think I'm familiar, the most common, the ones that I'm familiar with are a policy committee, facilities committee, particularly in larger districts that have a lot of facilities or perhaps they may have a time limited standing committee for facilities if there's, they're rapidly expanding district. Or perhaps there's some upcoming. Or perhaps there's some upcoming big construction projects and a facilities committee might be. Finance, again, I've seen them more commonly on a stand, as a standing committee in larger districts and also in maybe districts that are considering a ballot initiative. And they want the committee to do some, you know, some work around that in the finance part. Ad hoc committees are committees that the board may decide they need for a specific purpose. And they're temporary typically and short term most of the time. And they have a very clearly defined task to be taken care of. And then the committee is dissolved after they achieve that, that purpose or that task. Sometimes the board appoints a citizens advisory committee that's more, more, you know, in these standing committees and ad hoc committees, you're likely to have at least a couple of board members represented on there as well as some staff, maybe some other folks in the community. A citizens advisory committee may or may not have a board member represented, but would mostly be involving stakeholders. And again, it would be short term, specific task and a focus. And, you know, an example of this might be naming or renaming a school. And so there might be a stakeholder committee assigned to, to advise the board on that. So different types of boards, let me, let committees. So let me just pause there for a minute and ask if you have any questions about those different types of committees.
I do, Mr. President, I do, Ms. Brooks. Earlier this evening, I didn't pursue this any further because I knew we're going to have this, our, our training. And so I was, thought I'd wait to then.
Okay.
Brought to the board a, with regard to our bribe issue by the superintendent and the director of facilities, our operations brought to the board some information relative to a project. In the past, we've had a facilities committee where that would have gone. And I'm not saying I'm far against the facility, far against committees. But in the past, we've had that facilities committee. And one of the workshops we've had, I think, helped us establish certain committees. And I'm wondering which is the best practice for us in a situation like that? I'm not challenging the superintendent or operations director. I'm just saying which is best practices when it comes to a situation like that.
Okay. That's a, that's a, that's a really great question, Mr. Brooks. And I'm going to wait until later to answer that one because I think it might answer itself as we go along this evening. But that's a great question. I'm going to make note of that.
I have one other, one other point, a part of that. Should staff be, if you, if there is a committee like finance or policy or facilities, should staff be a part of that? If either as a voting member, if it is one or it's official?
Okay. So when, if, if the board needs a committee and decide, votes to have a committee, and we'll get to this, and there's a purpose for the committee, they may decide, talk about, you know, who do we need to be represented on that committee? Who are the types of people? And so it might be an administrator, it may be other staff persons, it might be a member of the community in addition to a board member or two. And, and so if it's, you know, staff member, whatever, we would defer to Mr. Obeng to appoint who the best representative is, who could, who has that expertise. All members of the committee have the same level of authority and voice and vote for the committee work. Yeah. Good question. All right. Let's go on. So let's think about what are some benefits when boards do decide to have committees? What, there are some, maybe could be, there are some positive aspects for some committees. One of the ways it is helpful is it can assist the board in making informed decisions. So sometimes by nature of the amount of work that the board has to address each month and the nature of some issues or topics or, you know, broad areas of operations of the district that it requires a lot more in-depth and time study. The board, and the, the board may decide to parse that out for a while to a committee to study and bring back some information. So it allows that committee to spend more focused, in-depth study of a critical issue because that's the purpose of their committee. It also gives the opportunity to include other people in that discussion and recommendation, if that's what they're charged with doing, that have some expertise and different perspectives that would be of value to the board in considering an issue. And, and it serves as an advisory. So the committee, again, does not make decisions. They're advising or reporting based on their charge to the report to the board. So they provide information, they might make a recommendation. But ultimately, that decision rests with the whole board. But it can be helpful in helping to study an issue in depth and evaluate options perhaps and bring information back to the board. On the, on the flip side, there are some disadvantages. There are some challenges with, when you have committees. We're going to address each of these, but they can be very time consuming. They, sometimes they, you risk, when you're serving on committees, you risk kind of crossing that line and, and moving out of that governance level down into the administrative and operational level. And sometimes when we have committees, it limits the full board discussion and deliberation, being able to chew on issues. So let's kind of explore that in a little bit more detail. So the whole time consuming aspect. You know, I have yet to meet a person that says, I love meetings. Give me another meeting. I want to go to a meeting, 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 meeting. I love them. Very few of us will say that. And we, most of the time, we don't really desire to have a meeting. We know that they're required and necessary and they're beneficial. But we don't often clamor to have another one. And it, when we have committees, it's another meeting that we have to work into our schedule. And depending on the number of people in your committee, it can be rather challenging to find a date that works for everyone to be there. And if we thought it was important to have five or seven or 10 representatives on a committee or three or even two, we have to be able to coordinate those schedules to find a good time. And, you know, we get fatigued with meetings and we call it death by meeting sometimes when we, we, we seem to just be meeting to death. And so those are, that's one of the challenges, just the whole time factor. Another one is, is that whole overstepping. And, and this one becomes a real challenge, I think, particularly with the longstanding committees. Because if they, if they go on for perpetuity or for a lengthy period of time, the tendency to get down into that operational side is, it becomes more and more risky. Most of the time when we have committees, staff are represented because they have knowledge and expertise that is needed to help inform the board's decision and the board committee. But the, the bad, the risk on that is when staff are readily at the table, board members will tend to ask more probing questions. They might ask for reports or other information that may or may not be relevant to the committee's work. And so it's just easy to fall into that operational side when you meet frequently and have access to that information. You know, on the other side, it can risk staff kind of stepping over the line and not following the, the chain of command either. That here's a board member, we're working on these issues and, you know, we'll just take this opportunity to kind of share some concerns with this board member. By the way, did you know that? Rather than following the, the process for addressing their concerns directly through the, through the policy KL. So it kind of works both sides. The other thing is it's sort of easy to get off track. You know, if our focus is around a finance committee and we're studying whether or not we, we're going to do a ballot initiative, it might be really easy to get off track into other finance issues that are not related. And again, it's in the operational level. When we serve on committees, there's often role confusion, both about what the board's role is as well as what's the staff roles are in that. And when there's that overstepping, we, we know from last time that, how it impacts relationships. When board members get into the operational side, staff kind of say, well, why, why bother if somebody else is going to do this work for me? Or is my work not good enough that they feel like they have to step in? And so it kind of fosters a mistrust and, and can be kind of challenging in that regard. So, so it's easy to get kind of off track when we have these additional opportunities and access to staff on that one-to-one and small group kind of basis. All right. Lastly, another, a big kind of area of disadvantage is that it limits the board discussion. And so if you have one or two or three board members that are serving on a committee and studying something in depth, they're going to have a lot more information, a lot more detail, a lot more discussion and interaction around this issue. And they may only bring back a summary report or a recommendation to the board. And the rest of the board is not going to have all that background information. Now, the board may have decided they wanted a committee to do that, but down the road, sometimes that has some negative consequences for the board members who were not part of that committee. And that there's value in having that opportunity for all the board to hear the same information, to ask questions, to discuss and to interact and, and be involved in that process. Sometimes a committee may have a particular preference or focus that, and try to influence or manipulate the other board members and sway them. And it may or may not be in the best interest of the district. So personal interests sometimes can interfere and influence the committee and the recommendation to the board. And then, so, and it's just that opportunity that the board misses out on to really chew on all the information together and to hear each other's comments and points of view and, and look at all the information together. So those are some of the challenges. You know, there can be some advantages, but there are also some real challenges that can often kind of undermine the, the whole benefit of the committee. I pause there for some questions or comments or thoughts. I did an awful lot of talking. I need to take a breath and listen to you.
Can you go back to your beginning slide that summarizes? Just for everyone to kind of see that slide and then come back.
About the committees?
Well, just the summary slide of this, yeah. The first slide.
Oh, oh.
No, I think it was your first slide.
Right, right here.
Yeah. So those two areas, right?
Okay, right. Yeah. So some down, the, the challenges are that they're time consuming. We risk stepping into operational side of administrative responsibilities. And it kind of limits the whole board discussion and deliberation so that everybody has the in-depth knowledge.
Speaking of what Mr. Townsend mentioned before, I think, from previous boards, I guess that was one of the things that it seemed that they were kind of overstepping and stepping into the administrator role on some aspects. So it's good that we're clarifying that. So now going forward, this board will take heed and act accordingly.
Other thoughts or comments?
I, I have a question. So, because I wanted to kind of wait until everything was kind of done and just kind of go through the whole spiel. But like, when it comes to, I wanted to wait till we were all the way done.
And we're, we're not, so I can, go ahead.
I can wait. I want to have all the information side, all my questions.
I appreciate that.
If I might, in terms of the, the board that, that was a part, we had committees, standing committees, who I thought worked very well. We, we decided whether issues would be on the consent docket. They're not on the way to my house, I want you to know that. And, and we, we, we decided whether or not there should be further discussion by the presenter, in most cases, you know, I was, I was chair of the finance committee. So we, if we decided along with Ms. Wilson, that something ought to be brought before the full board, then we, we put it up for discussion. And the other, the other time, it was, it was on the, it was on the consent docket. And I think it worked pretty well. We didn't have, I don't recall, much opposition to that. We followed what took place in one of our training in terms of establishing those committees and followed it pretty, pretty well. But I think a lot, it has a lot to do, does it not, Ms. Ms. Brooks, with personalities on the board? If you, if you have persons, well, I'll leave it at that. Yeah.
Well, Mr. Brooks, I'm, I'm going to beg to differ with you on that a bit. It, personality should have nothing to do with the board or the committees. It should be about what's, what is the business of the board? What are the needs of the district and what are the needs of the board? And yes, I agree, our, we can't keep our personalities out of, of any way we operate because we are who we are. But that's sort of the responsibility of the chair, whether it's the chair of the board or the chair of the committee, is to keep the focus on the purpose and the issue and not on the individuals.
I agree totally with you, but I didn't go any further because if I had gone any further, then I would have been reflecting some of the behavior of, of previous board members on committees. So I left.
Well, that's water under the bridge. Let's look forward.
Yes, that's why I didn't go any further.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
If I could help, if I can help. I think that the previous, the standing committees that we had, as I think as I stated before, were more interrogative in that, in that aspect. Just more or less the, as you put it, more probing. And even with some of the things that we do now, I would agree with, in this, in the other aspect of Mr. Brooks, that it was also very informative and allowed us to make a lot of good decisions that needed to happen, that needed that extra form of discussion. And I think that we just got caught, caught in a gray area previously. And I appreciate you being here, Ms. Brooks, and kind of being able to provide that, that clarity and aspect of the informative aspect of committees rather than the interrogative probing aspect of committees to be able to provide insight and context to things that don't have enough information. Now, they, these means tend to be time consuming. And there were certain times where more discussion had to be had during an open session meeting because only those committee members had the additional information. So then the information had to be resubmitted. And then the new questions had to be asked. And I think that now where we are right now, even with how you've kind of told us the advantages and disadvantages, we can take a more informative approach.
Sure. And I, and I appreciate that Ms. Johnson is still with us too. So that I, I trust that she will interject if I get off, if I misstate something that's not accurate or legal. But I, I always rely on her for her expertise as well. If she needs to step in there and say, oh, it's not right. To clarify. All right. So let's, let's take a, let's continue on. So one of the things is to think about before, you know, this is new board, new year, new team, to think about before you even think about establishing a committee, any committees, is to ensure that your governance team, the seven members of the board and the superintendent are united. And we talked about that last time in terms of what we know from the research is that those boards, again, in high, high achieving. is that those boards, again, in high and high achieving, continuously improving, they had a common shared purpose. They clearly defined where, what are our goals? What is it we're trying to achieve? And we were all working, they were all working in concert all the time on that focus. And I I'm not saying that you don't have that focus. You all may be completely united on that. You have a strategic plan that helps you focus. Mr. Obeng has an entry plan that we we reviewed and looked at how those overlapped last time. And it certainly does help you keep that focus. But but you're a new team. You have two new board members. You have a new superintendent. This is an all-new team. And so, you know, taking some time to reflect on who you are and who you want to be as a governance team is really important because if you have a foundation, then it helps you to determine what are our needs and whether or not we even need a committee to help us with our work. And and so agreeing on that. And that, the other thing I want to remember, remind you that we looked at was that because your team is new, it's kind of messy for it. And it it's not unusual to expect it to be a little messy in figuring out how you're gonna work together as a team. And you're probably kind of going back and forth between forming and storming and norming. All of those stages, you're probably kind of bouncing back and forth from one time to another in those areas in terms of, you know, trying to vie for, you know, who's gonna sort of take the lead? And and, you know, where does my voice fit? And, you know, what's our work and understanding that? And and I see you already growing in those areas. Tremendous growth and a desire to work together. And so and holding each other accountable. And I think those are all important aspects that are articulated in the tasks on the backside of that handout on the Tuchman stages of team development.
Ms. Parks, I just interrupted you for a sec, let you know that Ms. Graves has joined us.
I'm sorry?
I just wanted to let you know that Ms. Graves has joined us.
Oh, hi, Ms. Graves. I didn't notice you'd come in, but it's good to see you again.
She's on mute.
Okay, well, I'm glad you were able to join us. Thank you. Hope you're doing okay.
Yes.
So again, you know, it's that building your common purpose, having expectations for each other. So the kind of the board norms, how we're going to operate as a team, understanding your personal expectations and your own interests. How are we going to be accountable? You know, who has what to contribute? You each have different kinds of expertise. And so learning and understanding what each of you brings to the table to help you make effective decision. And then, you know, relying on Mr. Watry to provide good leadership on helping unite your team and to keep you moving forward. Those are kind of some of those things that you should be focused on now to help you navigate through those stages. And again, your strategic plan helps you focus. Mr. Obeng's strategic directives are are very similar in alignment and help you focus as well. Storming, you know, we go from forming to storming and then norming. Again, involving everyone in the discussion. So that's the counter to a committee in that we're divvying out responsibilities and and investigation or studying issues. And so in the beginning, it's helpful that everyone be a part of those, studying those issues, having the discussion, having those deliberations to help you learn about each other, to help you learn about expertise and be able to rely on each other. I'm pausing. I may, I don't know if you can detect this, but I'm having a bit of an allergy attack and I'm getting all stuffed up. So pardon me if I sniff a bit. And then at this stage, you know, the president sort of raises, you know, kind of focuses on some really hard things. Having you reflect and consider those difficult decisions to help you work together to become united. You have some rough patches now and then, but help you to navigate that to be able to work together. So those are kinds of those, looking at those Tuchman suggestions for the task is to think about, these are the kinds of things that will help you unite as a board team, which provides a great foundation then down the road. If you think maybe, you know, we may need a committee, you know, we have a need here. We have an issue that really requires some in-depth. Maybe a committee might be the the way to approach this to help our our board move forward with this. But without a good foundation, committees tend to flounder because there's that lack of of purpose and definition. Okay, another thing, that's the key. Before you establish a committee, why are you establishing a committee? We don't want to have a committee just because we've always had the finance committee. Or we always had a facilities committee, or we always had a policy committee. We need to have a committee because we have a specific purpose and need that's going to be beneficial to the board at large. And then when, how how long a period of time is this committee going to function? When do we want their work to be finished? Because when we have, remember, when we have that kind of unspecified time period and unspecified purpose, it's when that lends itself to getting off track and in the weeds in in the operational side. And Mr. Brooks, I I don't want to pick on you, but one thing, I I think you brought up a really good example here when you mentioned that the committee would decide if any information needed to be shared with the board. Now, that was a surface comment, and I certainly wasn't part of your committees, your committee meetings. And I I didn't see the committee, when the committee did bring information to the board, I didn't witness any of that. But just on the surface of that statement, it sounds like there was not a defined purpose and that the the committee did not have a good understanding of what their what their responsibilities were to the board in reporting. And that maybe that had not been clearly defined. And so I may be wrong about that, but just on the surface of that statement, that I would question, you know, that. And that's water under the bridge, so we don't have to revisit that. But I think, you know, that's a really great example of how that might play out. And I appreciate you sharing that because that gave me a good opportunity to reinforce that. So get everybody all together, determine if there's a real need. The other aspect is, okay, so what if we don't have committees? Many boards do not. I don't really know the numbers. I'm going to guess, and I could be completely wrong. I, but just based anecdotally on talking with board presidents and board members, I I think there are fewer boards that have committees than those that that don't. I think far more boards do not use the committee structure for one reason or another. One of the things that that many boards implement that sort of sometimes in addition to committees, but but sometimes in lieu of committees, is to have a work session each month or a work, maybe not every month. Some boards have them every month. Some boards have a work session, maybe just quarterly. Pardon me. Some boards pardon me, have them every other month. Or they might have a work session specifically to study a particular topic so that they'll be better informed for the action meeting. So that's sometimes work sessions. And I don't know if you use a work session structure currently or if you typically have a meeting a month and then any special meetings to address urgent issues.
This is technically our first working session, by the way.
Okay. So that's sometimes the advantage of doing a work session rather than parsing things out to a committee is really the flip side of some of those disadvantages in that we have all members of the board hearing the same information, being able to ask questions. You get to hear everybody's responses. And you get to study an issue in depth to have a greater understanding. And sometimes, especially when we have new members, new team, it's really helpful to have everybody get that foundational information. So just another option to think about. So if and when at some point you decide we need a committee, be sure to think about why is it necessary? And what is it we want the committee to do? What is their function? What is the end we expect from them? Think about how long do you want the the committee to serve? It may be a very short period of time. It may be something rather urgent, and it may be just a few months. It may be the duration of the year. Personally, I wouldn't have any committee's period of time for any longer than a year because you potentially would have new board members coming on. And it would be, the board should annually review the committees and determine the needs of the board. Are there any resources that the board is going to provide? Is there a budget? Maybe you maybe there needs to be materials copied. Is the board going to provide the board secretary support to take minutes? Any other of those kinds of resources? And then what's the date or expectation in terms of a report or a recommendation that needs to come to the board or superintendent? And keep in mind, because you're as as stated in your policy and as stated in law, the the ultimate decision and the authority for any decision resides with the entire board. So the committee doesn't have that authority. They can only make a recommendation or advise the board based on that purpose. You probably know this, but the committee is, any committee, board committee is subject to the same sunshine law requirements as the entire board. You have to post notice. The public is allowed to watch, observe the the committee meeting as well. You have, so you have to notify of the time and date, location, and and the tentative agenda. And it has to be in an accessible to the public. All those same requirements as your regular board meetings that you conduct. All right. So I I've inundated you a lot about committees. You've given a couple of good examples, but I I I want to pause. What are your questions? What are your thoughts? What are your concerns? I know you've been having some conversations about that, so want to share with anything with me.
So we we follow, we followed, I think, when we originally kind of decided upon roles, we followed the procedures and being able to choose who would stand on the standing committees that we currently do have. But we haven't, we have not necessarily initiated any standing committees. We we picked board members who would be in those stand, in in those committees, but we have not started it. We we have been in conversation regarding working sessions, like the one that we're kind of in right now. That being said, my question, my questions were in regards to having having, if we were to have policy, if we were to have committees while having working sessions, the overall thought process was that we would do the working session. Anything that did not, that needed more in-depth discussion in between the working session and the open session would then be put to that committee. Now, I'm not saying we would need that much, but it is more more of a a safety net to ensure that there's something that requires more discussion has more discussion. But the the aspect or the thought that we've had been discussing had to do with those meetings being more in ad hoc, which is the reason why I was like, I listened to your definition of ad hoc and your definition of of a standing committee. That being said, my question is, is it possible for us to have the standing, the standing, the standing session or the working session? While also, I mean, I I don't want to overkill and overwork my board members. We're just trying to be more lean about the time in which we 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 work with. I and I just kind of want to get your suggestions about how you, we we could go about there.
I I would I guess the whole, I'm going to go back to the I want to go back to the main question that I'm showing here on the slide is, why is a committee necessary? Why is a, why is a board work session necessary? You don't just, you don't just create these to create them. You have to have a purpose. If if by the nature of your regular board meeting, you are unable to sufficiently address the information or to make good decisions without further study and more information or because you, particularly because you have new members, if you need some learning time, and then the regular board to have a work session to help expand that or for any board members that aren't knowledgeable in certain areas. And nobody's an expert, expert in everything.
Right.
It really is about what does the board need to do your job to make effective decisions on behalf of the district? If you cannot accomplish that in one regular meeting a month, then there are, there are options in terms of, you can decide, we may need to have a work session before the next board meeting. We may need to have a work session every other month. We may need to have a set work session every month because we have a lot of questions. We need to have a better understanding. We would, our our regular meeting would be more efficient and we would be able to make better decisions. We may, we may decide, we may have a a particular area that we have a great need for more in-depth information that's going to require a little more time and study. The board may decide, we, we may need a committee to study this issue and report to the board each month for the next six months before we can make a decision about this. So it really has to be, why? Why do we need this? How is it going to help us do our work as a board? And if we're not able to accomplish what we need to accomplish effectively in that time, then here are some options we could consider as to how to help us do that. We don't create a committee and then try to figure out what it is we, they, they're going to do because it's sort of counter to the whole concept. Here's what we've decided. This is our focus. These are our priorities. This is what's important to us. We can't get all that accomplished in a board meeting. A committee or a work session are some tools to help us do that.
I mean, because because just based on, like, I'm taking in new information here, basically the information that you've just provided. Having that open session and only utilizing a working session as needed without committees would essentially get clear up our time and be able to address the issues that need to be addressed and making sure that the board gets all of the information at the same time. Would that, would that sound good kind of to start?
I think it sounds great personally.
Yeah, just personally asking your opinion.
I mean, because of you're a young team in that you have, you know, a significant portion of your team is new. You need to figure out how you're going to work together. You need to figure out, making sure we're all on the same page. We need to learn about each other. I think that would be very wise if you're doing that work altogether because that helps you strengthen and learn about each other and develop trust and understanding.
May I just make?
May I just make a quick comment in reference to the committee and again, I'm I'm not necessarily far against. But. I shared the finance committee. And we, I thought, I believe, helped the board an awful lot because there were times when when we reviewed something. And decided and I I kind of repeating what I said earlier, we decided we should be on the consent or discussion. And I can only think of a few times that the board, after we said it should be on the consent. Wanted an item pulled out and dealt with and heard by the presenter. So I think there might be some pros and cons to that. And and but I I think we save time. We tried to limit our our committee meeting to an hour. And which which then helped also the board limit its time because then they didn't have to go all the way through. What was being presented also. So so we found it, I think, and and. President Watry served on that committee. As did the president Brexit time. And I think it was very helpful to the board that we how we handle that, those issues that that dealt with finance.
Ms. Barks, can I can I end some analysis based on what I've heard and? Whatever I I've experienced, I guess, in my short two months joining this team?
Absolutely, please.
Sure. So one of the things I want, actually, I want to thank President Watry and Vice President Kendrick because I. I've kind of pushed them to hold off on taking any action until we've had some of these conversations. I thought the entire board needed to be part of it and they've been they've been great in terms of understanding. Yes, we want to we want to move together. Right? And of course, we're going to move a lot quicker. We're going to move slow when you're trying to get everyone on board to move and just singly going forward. But at the end of the day, we'll have a better product because we'll have everybody together in terms of moving that. I think we're a brand new team. You've got a new superintendent. You've got some new board members. You're implementing some new structures and even Director Townsend was able to observe that there have been some changes, so. That's a positive, but I still believe we're still in the storming stage, right? Got people thrown together. We're still in the storming stage. We haven't established our norms. If you look at. If you're watching even our our meeting today, we're still trying to figure out some things just in our regular procedures in terms of. What to do and we're working those things out. So I think there's some time that we need as a board to establish all our structures and routines and understand. What we want to do. So this time is great to have this opportunity to do to spend time on just our development before we we go forward. I think there isn't, I know Director Brooks has had some positive experiences with committees. I have as well too. I also had negative experiences as well too. It's more about the how and the purpose of it. I think for us, if we spend time together and define what our purposes of board is first. And then say we need help defining these challenges or issues and then you can define. A task for a committee. I have found the committees I've I've been a part of that have been very successful. They've been given a specific purpose and it's been time bound. You've got four months to address this question. And they focus on that question and they come back. They serve the board. So the board is asking them a question and they're coming back. So I think that would be helpful for us in terms of. Defining that. I'll give you a good example. Which is coming up for us is we just inherited thirty million dollars. Not inherited, sorry. We just we just had from the community has voted thirty million dollars for us to implement. Use usage for facilities for us for our schools. You know, I think that the entire board should start the journey together to understand what's happening. Get the information. At some point, the board is going to say, okay, we've got enough background. We have enough trust in our staff who are leading it. But there's some finite question, whatever it may come up being that we need a group to kind of focus in on and do some work on it. And then they can delegate that to the facilities committee to say, okay, now that's your task to go and do that and come back to us. That way, the entire board gets to be along the journey. Otherwise, you're doing right out of the gate. You're in a committee. You've got two or three board members. We're getting information. Then we have to come back to board and try to rehash the whole thing over again. And there's a time lap that happens between that, between the committee meeting and the board meeting, the new information that's coming. And so I do believe that we're at the stage that we need to spend some time. In terms of the frequency. I mean, I think that's up to the board to decide. I think no one wants to have more meetings and our board members are all busy and have busy lives and. To try to get them to come out, you know, several nights a week is is would be impossible and wouldn't be. No one would want to serve as a board member any longer. But even having the alternate, if we went to a bi-monthly working session for the next couple of months. So we could talk about what we want to do and then we eventually figure out this is where we want to go and there's communities determined that we would we would go forward. But even having this conversation, I think, is very healthy for everyone to get in on it to figure out where we want to go. So those are my comments and that's that's those are my reflections in terms of how I would see us starting out for the next several months at least. As we move forward.
You know, there's an old adage, if you want, if you don't want to get something done, appoint a committee.
Any other thoughts or comments?
I think this is a good start, especially since we we do have our bond coming up in there. We do need to. Start our ad hoc committee for that purpose. So this is a good start and great. Great information that we need to know. Thank you.
Looking through here to see. To the end on wrapping up. So just you've kind of already done this, but I guess I would maybe just go around the table. And first of all, you know, was there anything that sort of stood out for you this evening that sort of resonated? We kind of started the evening with what resonated or what you remember and you've been thinking about since the last time. So. Pardon me, what what? If anything.
Can I interject for a second? Critical piece that's kind of that the board needs to kind of, and I was hoping they'd have this opportunity to have the conversation in terms of. Our scheduling of our meetings and I think President Watry will probably be able to take the lead on this in terms of. What do we want to do about the working session? We're going to do alternate? Are we going to do it every month? Because that'll set us up for our continued conversation around deciding on. Committees and things. And I think it's critically for us to kind of walk away today, at least with that piece. Otherwise, we're going to be back starting a conversation all over again, right? Any thoughts on that, President Watry?
You know, with with some of the perspective that's been given by you, Mr. Brooks. Ms. Barks, as well as Ms. Kendrick. You know, I I like all these little notes I've been taking as far as just the different perspectives of what we can do. And I would agree with you, Mr. Obeng, that. There needs to be some cohesiveness that takes place with this board in the sense of being able to move forward together. I do feel like our having a working session implies that. It essentially allowed for the possibility for Ms. Barks to be here and for us to be able to gain more information about how to be more cohesive with one another. I do know that there are pressing issues that are coming up. More specifically with finance, with the bond, with. Looking at policy updates that are actually coming from MSBA. So what I would. What I want to do is be able to ask my our our board members, like what was their feel on what they? Because it's important for them to be able to state their their. The capacity. So that we can be able to accommodate and be able to address everything as a whole. I understand it's not going to be everybody else's capacity or everybody else's. Not everybody's going to like whatever decision we make, but it's important that we have a general consensus of what direction we're moving in. So I'm actually going to open the floor for the board members to be able to state what their thoughts are on whether having policy, having working session. Or having. Committees.
Well, I thought we had already voted that we were going to have. Meetings per month and one is a working and one is a regular.
Yes, yes, ma'am. We we did vote on that. We can new information that Ms. Barks has kind of provided to us. It leaves kind of some availability as far as what we think we need. So for us, we have a working session. We're currently in it. And then have the following week, we're going to have an open session. Do you feel you feel compelled that we should have a working session every month or bi-monthly? And will that will that be adequate enough to make sure that we are able to cover the issues that we are? Even as a board as a whole? And will it make us a little bit more lean with our time, energy and process?
If I can maybe just hearing hearing this, just to kind of offer us a thought.
Yes, ma'am.
So if the board has already voted to have a monthly work session and that's and and that's an oh, that's an open meeting also.
Yes.
Okay, just be sure you're under, yeah, that they're all the same page. And then to be able to study issues, learn in depth, maybe it's review some policies that we're in a policy update. That we're sending out because our legislators were very busy last year and required some new policies. But if you've already voted to have monthly work sessions, then. I would suggest that you follow through with that and see if that is beneficial. And if that it helps you make better decisions and have more efficient regular board meeting. I wouldn't try to assess two things at once. So you you already identified that perhaps you have a need for that. And let's say, okay, so you have a works, this is the work session and you have a regular meeting next week. Is that how? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then in October, you will have a works. Well, so next week or even another week or two into October. Let's say that there are no issues that surfaced that you have a need for a work session in October. Just because you have it scheduled, you could cancel that if you don't have any agenda items. My guess is that here in the beginning, it's a it's a new year. It's a very strange year. You've got a bond at your, you know, revenue that you're dealing with. You're a new team and it is learning together. My guess is that you probably would have an need for a work session in October. But again, it is based on what are the needs of the board. And, you know, give yourself some time to to invest in that model and see if that's beneficial to you. And if it's useful. And if you have greater needs beyond that to go more in-depth on a particular issue for a limited period of time. Then a committee might be the way to address that. But I wouldn't try to interject both a work session and committees right off the bat. Because then we don't really have a good assessment of either one.
That was our original thought. I just, yeah, and I know that I'm possibly being over analytical about this. But you're absolutely right.
I guess, I guess.
If someone could put their stuff on mute, please.
One of my concerns is that we're on a fast track as it relates to the the bond. And we just heard Mr. Weekly and the superintendent this evening. For between now and spring, when this project will really, when they start turning dirt. I ribbon tell you all like, there's a lot going on between now and say March or April of next year. And I I think it'd be, I think we as a board certainly would want to to know pretty much where we are. And each one of the in terms of getting from point A to point M. Or at least from point A to where we began to really turn dirt. And that and so how we how we informed about that, whether it's once a month at our regular meeting. Or a special session. I don't know why necessarily take a special session, but I think would mean that we have to to streamline or expedite our regular meetings to get that in. I like me personally, but I'm just one of seven. I like to really hear how we're going, how we're progressing along the way. As you recall, we those those issues were raised at our at our public, at our meeting just before we went into this training session. So that's that's my spiel.
Yeah, and and Director Brooks, and that's why when. Mr. Weekly spoke, we did say that we will be coming monthly to the board because I do feel that. At least in the first several months, we should be giving information to the entire board on a regular basis. And then at some point, the board can decide, okay, we have enough background and we want a smaller group to kind of hear it and not come to the board on a regular basis. But I think at the beginning stages, I think we have the capacity from staff perspective to be able to bring you something every month at the board meeting. To give you updates in terms of what's happening and and we can sort of consolidate that to those meetings. Until the board feels that they need an additional committee to look at that. But I wouldn't want to start out just going to committee and exclude the other board members from that information or duplicating it multiple times in one month. For for staff as well, too.
So, Ms. Barks, the other the other caveat to that was we also had decided to do. Thanks to Mr. Brooks, to be able to do those quarterly town hall meetings as well to make sure that the community is informed. I know that they'll be able to get the information at our open session meetings, but I I think as we saw in the chat, the availability for. Conversation and dialogue as far as the concerns of the community also making that available as well. So that we can. So if we need to address anything that comes up in the town halls can also be addressed. Within our within the working session or the or the the two open session meetings that are scheduled. So and technically, there's no real action because we've already taken action. So we're just kind of sitting here talking.
Alright. Anything else, Mr. Obeng or we're?
Let me just frame the question then, just because so because I one reasons I really wanted, because I know I heard from when we when. Mr. Watry brought the issue up, I guess, maybe almost two months ago now, I guess. We heard from some board members, different challenges around time and things like that. And so I wanted to make sure that. The board, even though they voted on that, that they're comfortable, this is the opportunity to talk about. And I'd love to hear from someone like Mr. Townsend who's had some experience. Around this. If we were to move to one board meeting and then one working session. Which we'd have conversations on topics that we decide or it could be training like this. And then at some point, the board can decide if they want to divvy up and move on to committees. And also, I mean, the working session is open to do it alternate months if that, because people can't commit to those times. Then I would want board members to kind of speak up now so we can make a commitment to that and have a plan that we can all sort of try to facilitate. Was that clear enough? That was that clear?
Yeah. You know, before in the district, we had the the. The. What we called the business section and then the regular meeting. And. What what happened is we did most of our business in the business session. And it moved everything. It was almost like a committee, a big committee meeting. And you would move it to the consent agenda. Therefore, at the end, I mean, at the regular meeting. Which became very short because everything was already thoroughly discussed. Or anything that wasn't discussed, I mean, that had questions left. We would add to, you know, we had just a few minutes speaking on that and clarifying everything. So it helped, it helps, I mean, though there was two meetings. That second meeting tend to be very short. So. I mean, I'm all for, I'm all for the. For the the two sessions. I mean, that's what that's what I was used to. I mean, I could probably adjust to either way. But I. I too kind of agree with you about the duplication of of things, you know. Go in depth with the committee and then they could. No, go in depth with the committee and then the same information has to be done again. So I said, the, the business session, to me, was just like a big committee meeting of, of the full, full board.
Right. So that's like a committee of the whole structure kind of thing, right? Because everybody's on that. Right? And so, so it sounds like the two. Could I ask, Ms. Graves, are you still there? You have any comments on, on this in terms of Mr. Thompson just articulated?
Yeah, I too was familiar. We did have two meetings, you know? And, but our, our meetings were not long. And my, my concern is that when you talk about, I don't remember voting on having two sessions. I think we, we've been told what the board president wants, what he wants to do. But I don't think it's been a lot of discussion. And so I think that, that's the thing that concerns me. I, I think that, that you need to talk about, you know, what you want and why you want it. So it's like it's coming from the top down and, and that's it. So that bothers me.
Yeah. I think that's why we're having the conversation now because we had, I think people had passed in. And so we made this space to have a conversation and see if this is where we want to go. That's why I'm kind of being really particular because trying to hear from each board member because we don't want to hear after the fact. This is your chance to kind of talk about.
And I think that, you know, I think that when, whatever you want to do, I think that you should have conversations with board members, even if it, if you had to pick up the phone and call them and say, well, listen, this is, you know, I'd like to, you know, get your support on this or so forth and so on. But I just, I personally feel like decisions are made without very little input from the board. And if, and if you don't follow these things, there's a more of a punitive, to, this is just my opinion, more of a punitive response, things said about you in a public manner to other people. So I have concerns about that. I think as a board, I think that even though we have different opinions, we might not even like each other. But when we come into that board meeting, we're one. And I don't think it's right to bash another board member unless you go to them personally and share how you feel about them. So I, I, I'm just kind of standing back with this board because I think the way we've done things have not been done in a manner where you're trying to get bored by it and you're just trying to do something. Maybe what you're doing is right, but I think the way that you're doing it makes me have a different attitude because there has to be dialogue. And the dialogue is really the buy-in that you have when you're trying to move your program forward. So that's just how I feel.
The comments, I think it sort of speaks to what your recommendation was. Like the board should spend the time working on the board itself before we start dividing up because it sounds like there's still more conversations to be had in terms of organizing before we kind of divide up. So I appreciate those comments from both the board members. And it kind of reinforces the plan that we heard, we were thinking about anyways in terms of the one, one meeting and having everyone at the table so everyone can have a say. And that's why we're having this opportunity right now. And I want to thank the, the vice chair and the president because when I had a conversation about this, they were very supportive and wanting, and wanting everyone to have a voice in terms of what we do going forward. So.
Can I say something? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I think, I was going to say, one thing I wanted to say is that I was listening to how Mrs. Graves just talked about how things are not presented to the whole board. But one piece of the puzzle that is missing, I believe that in order for us all to be aware of what's going on and to agree on things and to move forward, we all have to participate in come to meetings. Now, I didn't see, a couple of meetings we didn't have and board members have been missing meetings. And then we come back and then others say, we haven't had a chance to vote or I didn't agree on this or, but you're never going to be on board or we're never going to agree on everything. It's, everyone does not show up to meetings. We can't have just three to four people all the time. Or you pop in the meeting and you pop out of the meeting. We have to be at every meeting in order for everybody to be on the same page. And that's my personal opinion. I'm not trying to say, you know, everyone has their own personal issue. Everybody has something going on. But as a board member, we knew, once we stepped into this position, it was going to be a lot going on. And I feel like if you didn't have the time to do this, then this was not the right opportunity for you. But I believe we all need to be able to come to meetings in order for us to all agree and be on the same page. I'm done.
Before, before we leave, I'm, I'm going to continue to mention this. I think it would be good for us to have some Robert's Rule training by an expert. The gentleman, I had his name earlier this evening and he just gave me, he's, he's one of the experts. I think many of these school boards use him around. He lives in Independence, Ms. Barks. Are you familiar with?
I think you're speaking about Dr. Leonard Young.
Yes, yes, Dr. Young, yes. So I think that might help the new board also. I, I hope we've not put this off too far. We, we, we've now into our, almost our third month of the new seventh, well, we're going to fourth month, I guess. July, August, September. And, and I, I hope we put that on the agenda because I, I think we really need it in terms of our relationship that may help our relationships in terms of, of knowing the, the art of, of Robert's Rules.
And it's the next working session.
Well.
That gives you some thought, some food for thought there, President Waugh. I think you, you heard, I think, I think people are kind of agreeing with your plan, not realizing they're agreeing with it in so many different ways, so.
But I don't, I have nothing to say.
Barks, I'm, I'm going to paraphrase what I think we're doing. And then I'm going to turn it back to you. So it sounds like the board is still resolved in having one regular meeting, another regular meeting, which would be a working session. People want to sort of expedite those meetings so we can use the time for discussion and not prolong the information. And we will continue to work through that until we get to a point where the board decides they want to do committees. There is, there has been a standing recommendation to do parliamentary rules. And I know you and I have talked about that. So we'll make sure we get that in possibly for the next month on the working session around some parliamentary work around the board. And that's what I heard and that's, that's what I think I'm going for. So anybody correct me if that's.
Yeah, I guess, I, I, in sitting back listening, I, I'm wondering, Ms. Graves, if I appreciated your comments as well, everyone's comments. Ms. Graves, I wasn't clear on, it certainly isn't for my benefit, but for the benefit of your team. If you are in agreement, if you felt like you have a voice this evening, if you are in agreement with having the work session each month in addition to the regular meeting.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I've, I've, I've been, we've had that before in the past.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm in agreement to that.
All right. Well, everybody else may have understood that, but it wasn't clear to me. So I just wanted to ask that for my, my own benefit. So thank you very much for that.
Ms. Barks, this is Donna Payton. I have a question, please.
Yes.
When we're talking about the work session, is this a regular meeting or will it be a meeting where attendance is optional?
I know, it's a board meeting.
Okay. So it will count like our regular sessions do now in regards to attendance?
Well, if it's, if this is a, if this is a meeting that the board has decided is going to occur on a regular basis, that we're going to have a monthly work session in addition to our monthly business meeting, a regular meeting.
Two board meetings a month.
Then that, then that becomes a regular meeting.
Thank you for that clarification.
Sure. All right. Anybody, anything else or you want me to wrap this up?
I'll have you wrap it up after I ask you one question.
Yeah.
Because there was a community member who was very interested in, in audience comments. And I want to make sure that with be, these two sessions being open sessions and being regular board sessions, audience comments is privy to both. Am I correct?
You decide that. You just, the board decides when you are going, if, first of all, the board decides if you are going to allow public comment. The law does not require you to have public comment. The law requires you to post notice and inform the public of when you're meeting, where you are meeting, what are you going to talk about at the meeting? They get to watch that and view the, the, the act, you know, the, the meeting. You decide, and because the purpose of the meeting is for you to do the business of the board. The board decides if you're going to allow public comment. And if you are, you establish the, the parameters for public comment. Many times that's articulated in policy. So I would encourage you to review your policy. It's your board agenda policy, I believe. BDDB, I believe. I'm, I'm not, you might need to look that up.
Yeah, you're right.
But I would refer to that policy to find out what your policy says about public comment. And then we also, our attorneys developed a document about public comment during virtual meetings. And so they offered some guidance and suggestions. And I'm going to email that to you probably tomorrow, probably not tonight. But I will email that to you tomorrow and it's on, posted on our website for you to think about also because I know how, you know, boards are doing that differently around the state in terms of public comment. In my, in my limited experience in participating in other virtual board meetings, only the board and any, any staff that are needed for the, that board meeting have access to the actual Zoom meeting. And they're, many boards are streaming their meeting like on YouTube or Facebook or other, other places or recording the meeting. And public comment is submitted in advance, you know, and those kinds of things. So there, the, this publication by our attorneys does address some of that. That's something you may want to review as a board and certainly talk with Ms. Johnson about and think about, you know, how you want to manage that in this virtual world and still be responsive to your stakeholders and allow that, that input.
Okay.
And, and as far as like the scene, you know, you had a posted public comment period on your agenda. You, you, you allowed that to happen per your agenda. And, you know, you had to move on with the rest of your meeting.
Yeah, yeah. And I just, I want a clarification just as, as president, just to make sure that I'm allowing the board to have, not allowing the board, but just ensuring that the board is informed of kind of what.
We're all figuring this whole virtual world out still. So, but we, we have to just kind of think about, you know, what does our policy say?
Right. Right.
Policy is your friend.
It is. Ms. Barks, I really, really appreciate you taking the time this evening to, taking your evening to just be able to assist us with this and help provide us with some clarity on moving forward, not just with our committees or working sessions, but rather just our roles and how we can keep, can communicate and collaborate with one another. I, it's always a pleasure to talk to you.
Well, the pleasure's mine. I, I appreciate all of you as well. So thank you very much and best wishes. And I'll, I'll see you again, I hope.
All right.
And thank you so much. See you next month.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Maybe. Oh, we'll see.
God bless. Bye. Good night.
Night. Bye-bye.
Oh, I probably should adjourn this meeting before you guys. I saw you going, Mr. Brooks. The time is now eight forty-nine and I would like to call this meeting to adjourn. Have a wonderful night, everyone.